Eighteenth, twenty twenty, it's one o'clock PM. We are here for a regular city commission meeting at the City Administration Center, three oh one North Eighth Street. So we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. City Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we're gonna go ahead and open with the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag and Invocation by Commissioner Euler.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow with me. Father in heaven, grant us wisdom to make good decisions during our commission meeting. Father, we ask for prayers for educators regarding City Community College as they start classes, for USD four five seven, school administrators and teachers who are preparing schools and classrooms, for the students and parents who will be sending their children to school, keep all of them safe. We also pray for the safety of our first responders. And Father, in your name, we give you all the glory and please we pray for wisdom during our meeting today. Amen.
Thank you so much. So again, I know you've had a chance to review the minutes, and if there's no corrections are offered, we'll be stand as approved. Any corrections? Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and we're gonna move on to the public comment. Again, we have thirty minutes scheduled for this. Please keep your comments to five minutes, and if you will, please come up to the mic and announce yourself, and that way we can hear and everyone else who's also watching via online, if you're not on the agenda. So if there's anyone with public comment, we'd invite you to come forward. Okay, at this time, we're gonna go ahead and move on to the consideration of petitions and memorials and remonstrances.
Item six A, Stewart Nelson and Gibson Mancini Carmichael and Nelson Architects, on behalf of Garden City Community College, requested waiver from the Garden City two thousand seventeen General Improvements Handbook for the width of a driveway approach for a new bus terminal approximately located at six fourteen J C Street. Carol.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Okay, so the County College, Garden City Community College, they do own several buses, and due to the cost of the buses, they, and if they just storm outside right now, they'd like to get a bus terminal so they can protect their investments. So they've been looking around, we've been working with GM CN on locations that they've approached us with. This location on J C Street is across the street from Saint Dominique's Catholic School. And we've got J C Street on one side, and then the other side's got a continuation, I don't matter if you wanna go to the aerial continuation of Mac Street, but it is private property on the college. So if you look at the site, it's a very narrow site. This was the best site that they could find for, they want six terminals, six bus terminals there. So because of the narrowness, they are needing to extend the width of their entrance. They will be entering in off of J C Street and then exiting the backside of the continuation of Mac Street. So with that, our regulations, our handbook, improvements handbook that we have adopted with the city, the widest width you can go on commercial is thirty-six feet. They're asking for just a little bit under a hundred and nine feet to be able to get every one of those driveways or each stalls. Staff has looked over this. Well, it is against our regulations. We do feel it would be a good move in that it would be safer to have the wider terminal because the buses wouldn't have to do as much maneuvering. Also, it would be easier on the surface of J C Street without making those super sharp turns. It'll ease up on the, any kind of damage that it might do to J C Street. So they, as I mentioned, staffs will kill, but if that does recommend approval, do you have any questions? Do you have representation of the applicant here, or am I able to answer?
Any questions on this one? Okay, if not, we'll go ahead and we'll open for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the variance as asked from Gibson Mancini.
Oh, so Commissioner Ortiz says, as motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
It actually is a waiver, not a variance.
It's a waiver, right, yeah. Do you wanna go ahead and correct your motion?
I will approve the waiver as requested by Gibson Mancini Carmichael Nelson.
Okay, so it's been moved to approve the waiver. We have a second by Commissioner Dick. So any further discussion on that one? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you so much, Carol.
Item six D, the governing body is asked to consider a request from Kinder Acevedo for a waiver of noise ordinance on Saturday, September fifth, from four PM to two AM for a wedding celebration, nine twelve Pershing Avenue, specifically for music to be played in the back garage. See, Lynn has provided you information on the special events request. The commission some time ago allowed the city manager to authorize waiver to noise ordinances up until eleven PM. This is because half of our agendas were waivers to noise ordinances and felt that those could be administratively approved up until a certain time, and that the requests outside of those would have to come before the governing body. As part of that process, if folks do request after eleven PM, it's customary for us for them to show us some indication that this is a, an acceptable situation to the other affected properties. And so the request went to Kinder Acevedo to do that, and I believe they've provided some evidence that they've gone around. And do you have anything to add, See Lynn?
No, I don't have anything to add.
All right, and is the applicant of the event here by chance?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I will say, I do appreciate that they did take the time to go around each and every neighbor. The two o'clock AM is, you know, the only concern I have. That's, that seems very late, and I'm not so sure that I would be in favor of doing something like that, but. Do we have any comments or questions, or?
At the same time, they got the signature, so if the neighbors had the same issue, they wouldn't have signed.
Okay, good. Do we have a motion on this one?
I move that we approve the waiver of the noise ordinance as outlined here.
So Commissioner Dick has moved to approve the wave ordinance. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Euler. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Nay.
Oops, sorry. Nay, so motion carries four to one.
Item six C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from Christie Graber with Southwest Kansas League of Women Voters to allow the mayor to proclaim August eighteenth, twenty twenty, as Nineteenth Amendment Centennial Commemoration Day in Garden City, Kansas.
I know that Christie is here, do you wanna come forward?
Excuse me, Mayor, I would just like to say we've received some comments that viewers can't hear.
Can't hear any of us?
Correct.
Wow, okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Hi, Mayor. Well, today's the hundredth anniversary of women's right to vote and the passage of the Nineteenth Amendment, so it's a very historical day for women today. And we have celebrations all throughout Kansas. We're gonna be doing some more voter registration drives and some civic education, and we just want everybody to get out and vote. We've had a great turnout for primary, and we hope that it continues that way. We need to do a little civic education, though, and we have some base plans planned within the community. So I appreciate you considering this, and I'm really thrilled that this is our centennial, and it's something that we all need to remember.
Thank you. Christie, do you have, or Carol, do you have anything you'd like to say?
No, I just came along.
As backup, well, thank you, thank you so much.
I'll make the motion we approve the proclamation as presented.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Sessina to approve the proclamation as presented. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Euler. So with that, I'd like to read the proclamation, and then if not, we can go, Matt, how are we on pictures, or do we, can we do those, or know if we all have masks, or?
Yeah, so if they're having a, you've got.
Okay. Now, I love all the commissioners, after I read their proclamation, then that way, all the commissioners, then we can go down and get our picture taken, so.
I call a question.
Okay, I'm sorry. So, yep, we have the question, do we have a, I'm sorry. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries five to zero. Sorry, I got excited about your proclamation there, so. Okay, so whereas in eighteen forty-eight, people gathered together in Seneca Falls, New York, and cited the unfairness of depriving women of the right to vote, the fight for women's suffrage lasted more than seventy-two years. And Carrie Chapman Call, or Cult, is it Cut or Cult, led the national movement, meeting with President Woodrow Wilson, to secure his support for suffrage in the light of women's contributions during World War Two, World War One, and whereas it took male allies to support the women in their endeavor to vote, for it was sons, husbands, and fathers who ultimately heard the calls of women, and the House of Representatives took a historic vote on May twenty-first, nineteen nineteen, followed by the centa on June fourth, nineteen nineteen, and three-fourths of the states needed to ratify the Nineteenth Amendment. And whereas Kansas was the tenth state to ratify the Nineteenth Amendment on June sixteenth, nineteen nineteen, and the ratification of the Nineteenth Amendment ensures women could more fully participate in our democracy and fundamentally change the role of women in civic life of our nation. And most of the women who began asking for the right to vote never lived to see the enfranchisement of women. And whereas the daughters, granddaughters, and great-granddaughters of women who fought so hard to vote have been making their voices heard at the polls for nearly one hundred years, and women are running for office in unprecedented numbers, many current politicians, both male and female, remember that they follow in the footsteps of these great suffragists. And whereas the centennial anniversary of the ratification of the Nineteenth Amendment represents a historical milestone to be lauded and celebrated. Now therefore, I Troy R. Unruh, Mayor of Garden City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim August eighteenth, twenty twenty, as Nineteenth Amendment Centennial Commemoration Day in Garden City, Kansas, and encourage all of its citizens to participate in the celebratory and educational event in the coming year. Signed and sealed this eighteenth day of August, twenty twenty. Thank you so much, so, yep. So again, if you need a mask, I know Matt has some, and we can.
Right there at the end.
One, two, three.
Yeah, when you're smiling, yeah, doesn't matter if you're smiling or not, so, yeah.
It's on eyes.
Yes, it's in your eyes.
Two, three, one more. One, two, three. Thank you guys.
Carol, thank you for coming.
Good to see you. Thank you, Matt.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much, so much, thank you.
Well, that could be a, that's a new first, so.
We're ready for the city manager's report. Item A, Todd Dummler, project manager with McCowan Gordon, will give a construction update on Garden Rapids at the Big Pool. Todd?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mayor. Thank you for allowing us to speak. Did you guys pick up today on the progress that we've had thus far at the Garden Rapids and Big Pool project? As of today, we have mobilized on site, we got our job trailer up, temporary powers up, and that, all that good stuff. We're still putting some of the furnishings in. We did have our first owner-architect-contractor meeting, OAC meeting this morning, and so Jennifer and Matt, and we're pretty sure enough to come to that. The rest of the team joined the team's meeting, so we're still getting used to that format. But I think it was a good meeting, we try and keep it short and sweet, about thirty minutes. I just kinda shared some of the progress, we got walking aside with Matt and Jennifer. So as you can see on the slides, we did have our job trailer up, we've got all of the stormwater pollution prevention plan, all of that, this width is up, and we have begun demolition. So these photos are a couple of days old. All the walls that you see on the backside there by the back excavator, those are all out, and the bottom slab is about twenty-five percent demolished right now. And so far, we found pretty good soil underneath, so we're excited about that.
You didn't find a big hole or anything?
Yeah, any surprises?
Yeah, yet.
Nothing good yet, but.
I know people are asking where these bats came from.
And we do have, so those are the pictures that you're getting right here, and that records three snapshots every fifteen minutes, and I don't know if Jennifer shared that with you or not, but it does have the live view, so you can, you can see what's happening right now if you want. It's pretty slick. So with that, do you guys have any specific questions?
No, I, you know, after with the groundbreaking, you really got to work quickly, and so there was some pretty dramatic a couple of days after, so, yeah. Been riding bike down there every once in a while just to check it out, and I'll tell you, the changes daily really are going quickly, so thank you.
It will be, it will be for a while, you'll see big changes every day, so we're excited at that.
Thank you for being, thank you for the updates, we really appreciate them, and I know I've been in public. Right, any questions or comments? All right, well, thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Mayor and Commissioners, items B through G are staff reports. Are there any questions on those reports that we might be able to answer?
I just wanted to know, and I was going to email, I forgot, about the twenty twenty, is this how other airports of our size are kind of faring also? I was just curious about that.
Rochelle, are you here?
Sorry, Rochelle, I was, I was gonna tell you at the meeting, then I forgot to, so.
Yeah, unfortunately, everybody's struggling in the air industry, especially the larger airports. We are very fortunate that we have this central air service contract that has predominantly helped us keep two flights daily. We did lose that for about a month period, but slowly, as you can tell by the report, numbers are creeping back up, but just industry-wide, it's a huge loss of passengers.
Okay, no, thank you.
I was gonna say, so on the air traffic control operations, in this last month, we had twenty-five hundred, which is not just above average, but above average, above any other. Why did we get such a dramatic increase this last month?
Yeah, so actually, that is the best July that we've had since the tower opened in two thousand. Predominantly, it's a lot of military traffic coming through, doing practices, as well as the excavators are up and running right now, too. So that increases our traffic. Typically, those, July's been a heavy month for us, for the excavators, but with that additional military traffic, it's really increased the numbers.
Thank you.
That was good to see. Any other questions or comments?
Can I add one more thing?
Sure, yeah, no, please.
Typically, right now, we go through our FA annual inspection, and however with COVID-19, the FA looks at airports, and they basically put them into two categories, airports that are compliant with the FA inspection, and then airports that have problematic inspections every year, so fortunately, we fell into compliance.
Congratulations, congratulations, that's great.
So we will not be inspected this year, we will be inspected next August or September.
Okay, great. Well, thank you so much. I know there's lots going on at the airport, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rochelle. The, I would like to add a couple items under reported to city manager, just for your information, and these are some things that, that we've sent out messaging internally or advised you of, but just that there's maybe a community recognition in a, you know, in a formal setting. First one of those is Andy Lee Belt, interim Public Works Director, has, had visited with me a few weeks ago. His intent to resign September eighteenth to pursue a professional opportunity in Wichita, and also kind of get closer to family, so we're certainly gonna miss Andy. He's worked for the city in a variety of capacities, most recently Parks Director, and then Assistant Public Works Director, and has led the Public Works team while Sam was doing some special projects work towards the end of his tenure with the city, and then has served as the interim Public Works Director. We lose a great leader in Andy, a great leader of people, really creative mind and solutions-based employee, and we wish him luck, and we'll find a time between now and September eighteenth to have a appropriate send-off, but just wanted you to be aware and announce that formally. The search is underway, we advertised for the Public Works position a few weeks ago, and we are nearing the point where we'll begin reviewing resumes and selecting folks to move on in that process. The other one that I'd like to announce is Police Chief Michael Utes has let me know that it's his intent to retire on, on or about March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty, and we've put out, we've put out some information, public information on that, and we would certainly congratulate Chief Utes on an outstanding career. There's more of that career left to go. March twenty, March twenty-sixth is a ways out, but I really appreciate the heads-up and the courtesy extended in him allowing there to be that amount of a lead-out time. And it's my intent to take advantage of that and begin developing the police chief profile and going through the process that will look very familiar to the process that we used when we hired Chief Utes. So the, will, there'll be several ways where we can engage the community members and different groups of stakeholders, and certainly, certainly look forward to that progress, although we'll miss, we'll miss Chief Utes, he's got a tremendous career spanning into four decades that, that has seen him climb the ranks of the organization, outstanding reputation in the intelligence community, and that kind of leads me to my last update that wasn't on the agenda, and that's that Chief Utes received from the M O C I C award last week at their annual conference. And Chief, I was gonna have my phone pulled out to get the name of it right, but bear with me, but we certainly, certainly congratulate Mike, it's well-deserved. I don't know what you all know about M O C I C, I kind of learned a little bit yesterday, I thought I knew, but I didn't. Nine states are part of a compactor cooperative that share among their law enforcement agencies intelligence information, and so each state has a representative to that compact, and the local law enforcement board member from Kansas is Chief Utes, and has been, I think eighteen years? Nineteen. Don't wanna cut that short, no. Nineteen years has not only represented Garden City in M O C I C, but has represented Kansas, so congratulations to both of you.
Thanks.
And of course, we'll plan going away party and celebration and recognition of Chief when that time gets closer. I think we're ready for meetings of note.
Hey, I just noticed in our activity report for Neighborhood Development Services, just, you know, with the seven and a half inches of rain that we've got last month, and, you know, we continue to get more rain, I notice we've got additional weed complaints and stuff, you know, as you drive through the communities, you see, you know, I know my yard has grown tremendously, you know, I have to mow it like every other day, it seems like, but I noticed that starting to pick up as well.
Yeah, thank, thank you, we can always tell how much it's rained by how many emails begin to come our way as well. And just to let everybody know, it is perfectly, perfectly fine to send those, there's a code enforcement email, send those to there, if you feel like you need to send it to the city manager's email, send it to me, and send it to commissioners, and they'll forward it on to us, we get those addresses in. Just to update people on the process, in rainy years, we tend to give this update during the summer. Upon notification, our staff goes out and inspects, or let's say upon complaint, it's a, we talk about it being a complaint-based system, that's the opposite of us having a, being staffed to the level where we patrol for weeds, we don't patrol for weeds, what we do is we respond to complaints. They, when a complaint's issued, we go out and inspect it. While we're there, the inspector will also look kind of in every direction from that spot and also cite properties there. For this reason, although it's a complaint-based system, the first thing we tend to hear back from the impacted party is, well, why'd you just write me, my neighbor down there? This is the only assignment.
Right, yeah, that's good.
We've cited, we've cited them as well. So when we go to a site, we do, at that point, sort of do a patrol, cursory patrol of that area within site distance of where we're issuing the citation. They have fourteen days to comply with the directive. We'll send a written notification on fourteen days, we'll go out and inspect it again, if it still exists, then at that point, we can, we can take action and order it to be abated, which is, the shorthand version of that is, we put it on a mow list, and we have contracted mowers, the commission approves that, and we go through that list, and they pick up those assignments. In a rainy year, they can get a little bit behind, I mean, sometimes that can be a seven-day lag or so, and, but, you know, let's add that seven days to the fourteen days, and maybe plus a day or two to allow for the inspection load. That can be a twenty-three or twenty-four month process. So if you notice a property, understand it to be.
Hopefully a day, not a month.
Yeah. A lot of those take care of, take care of themselves within that window, but there can be times where I'll receive an email, or the commissioner will receive an email and say, what's the deal? I've called on that and nothing's happened. Well, nothing, very well, nothing may happen inside of fourteen or fifteen days, that could be the property owner's choice at that point in time. After that, it's the, us, the commission through administration making the choice of we're going to outsource that mow list work. Really, we couldn't get to it faster than that, in fact, probably be slower than that, not to mention far more, far more expensive. So complaint-based system, it's okay to, it's okay to notify us of an address, we'll check it out, and I can assure you, the list of noticed nuisance properties is pages long. And, yeah, we've had a lot of rain spread out over the growing months, and it's been a year for tall weeds in Garden City, for sure. But thanks for, thanks for that question, and we, I know, I know the commission's received a couple of them that are hybrid, hybrid nuisance, but then also sort of a building aspect to, like, is this building in such a state of disrepair that it might need to be demolished or looked at? One of those is a recurring issue, and I can say with some confidence, while there may need to be some, some action taken to board up some openings or some places that have the potential or in fact are animal vectors, that those need to be sealed up, so windows, eaves, doors, all need to be sealed up, but to bring it into compliance with our building code, it's, it can be boarded up, which isn't slightly, and usually doesn't sit well with neighbors, but it is compliant, the demolition comes in when the building looks like it's structurally unsound, and not necessarily, it isn't a pleasant to look at sort of, sort of issue. The other properties, one north of the county administrative building, you may have been noticed on, or emailed about, that one, we've provided notice to the property owners, and hopefully that's, that gets abated, I think their fourteen days were up tomorrow. The building is probably gonna need addressed, too, but again, minimal work that still won't make it super great to look at is really all they'll need to do to bring it into compliance. There has been, in both of those instances, sentiment expressed that the city commission should look at a higher standard of building maintenance or building code. The commission has done that on two occasions in the last eighteen years. The commission has done that on two occasions in the last eighteen years. And we occasionally get asked to look at that or bring something back as well. We understand that there's that sentiment, and if you live next to one of those properties, you share that sentiment. The other sentiment exists in this community as well, and that is that, you know, the local government shouldn't be enforcing building demolition sort of codes on aesthetics or appearance. A lot of towns go through that policy debate, and that policy struggle, and those tend to be pretty fiery conversations. So understand both sides of it, and certainly if the commission desires us to explore some sort of minimum maintenance code above and beyond structural soundness, we can explore But to this point, the code as it stands really just addresses whether or not the building's going to fall under its own weight.
I appreciate that. I do want to do a check-in, just to make sure that we can be heard. Is there, Madam Clerk, is there, do we need to make changes? Okay. Because I know all the things that are being discussed today are important, and so I want to make sure that we're heard. If you, when you answer, when you have some comment, please lean forward into your mic, and that way we can do that, so, thank you.
So under meetings of note, one thing that I want to make sure is added, because it is a public meeting, September 2, 2020, at 5:30 PM in Dodge City, Kansas, the Southwest Kansas Coalition has their annual meeting. The Southwest Kansas Coalition is the organization comprised of the City of Garden City, the City of Liberal, and the City of Dodge City. The commissioners meet at that meeting and do not take action. They have a discussion. But it's for the purpose of developing a consensus around what our legislative policy will be for the Southwest Kansas Coalition. That only becomes the legislative policy upon all three cities bringing that language back and taking it up as an action item under your three agendas. So in order for that to become the SKC platform, the City of Garden City has to take a vote, and it has to be successful. The City of Liberal has to take a vote, and it has to be successful. The City of Dodge City has to take. So there's no action going to be taken at that meeting. There will be discussion, and then the meeting's open to the public.
Thank you, Matt.
I think with that, we're ready for item 9A. It's the appropriation ordinance, and if approved, it would be number 2513-2020A.
Mayor, I'm going to approve appropriation ordinance number 2513-2020A.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Dick. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero.
Item 10A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an ordinance amending Code Section 30-89 cemetery grave spaces, interments per space. If approved, it would be ordinance number 2873-2020. Andy?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Before you is a proposed amendment to the ordinance for Sunset Memorial Gardens. What we're looking at is trying to get both cemeteries cremation burials as close as possible as we can, so we've changed some language in the ordinance for that. Currently, regardless of the type of interment at Sunset Memorial Gardens, the ordinance says one burial per space, whether it's a traditional burial or a cremation. And so what we have before you is a change that went before the Park and Tree Advisory Board. We had six members present, and it was unanimous of those six members that were there. And this also is not taking away responsible decisions by cemetery section that may come up. We still have some of that leeway in there, but we just want to get consistent with both of our cemeteries. And it allows people, if they want to go out to Sunset Memorial Gardens, to have a family, if they wanted to enter them with a cremation on one spot rather than buying multiple spots. And it also, it could, I don't imagine it being this huge efficiency thing at this point. In the future, it might be. We just want to get the ordinances consistent. And so the alternatives is approve the request to amend ordinance 3089 grave spaces and terments per space, or alternative two, deny this same request, and staff recommends alternative one.
Do we have any questions? If not, we'll call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the request to amend ordinance 3089 grave spaces.
So we have a motion to approve the request 30-89. Do we have a second?
I'll make a second to approve ordinance number 2873-2020.
Sorry, I was reading it off of the.
It's okay.
Yeah, that's what it says in there. Paper, sorry.
So we have a second, so we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Andy, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item 12A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the right-of-way easement use agreement with Fannie County. Mike?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Fannie County is exploring the possibilities of installing a fiber optic communications system that would include portions of the incorporated areas of the City of Garden City. This right-of-way and easement use agreement would, it requires permission from the city to allow Fannie County to put their system within the public right-of-way or are either city's easements. The term of this agreement would be for five years with an automatic one-year renewal, unless it would be terminated. And termination of the agreement requires a 180-day notification prior to the initial term of any successive term. This is strictly just for the use of the right-of-way. It's not granting them a franchise or anything like that. It just allows them to use our infrastructure, I mean, our right-of-ways. They still have to go through all the permit processing and that type of thing. Alternatives, you can approve this or you cannot approve it. Staff recommends alternative one, and there's no financial impact to the city by approving this agreement. I'll answer any questions you may have.
So I have a question, Mike. Is this part of the, does this have to be completed within, by December 31st? Or, I mean, I know this is part of the Sparks thing that we're working on, or does this agreement extend how long? Is what I was curious.
Yeah, Bear, this would give them permission to put their facilities anywhere in the right-of-way.
Okay.
And if you approve this, it'll be for a five-year term.
Five-year term, okay.
I do believe that they would like to get started on getting some of their stuff installed right-of-way.
Okay.
Right-of-way, soon, I guess.
Right, right, right. That's good. Any other questions or?
Is this the one also talking about the property on West Mary?
No.
Is that the next one?
That's different.
Okay, so we'll call for a motion. Does anyone would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve the right-of-way and easement agreement as presented.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Sussman. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
So it's been seconded by Commissioner Euler. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Mike.
Item 12B, the governing body is asked to consider certain factors set forth in KSA 66-1176 and select an electric service provider for the annexed properties located at 3455 East Highway 50 and 1601 West Mary Street. Mike?
Thank you, Matt, Commissioners. There's a lot of information in here. I'm going to go through the majority of it. Wheatland Electric was notified of the meeting, and they did submit their answers to the eleven factors. We were notified yesterday that they would not have a representative here to speak on their behalf, that they would just let their written record stand as the record for them. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and proceed here. Governing body has regularly scheduled city commission meeting on May 12, 2020. Approved ordinance 2863-2020, annexing the property located at 3455 East Highway 50 into the boundaries of the city. This property is directly east of Love's Convenience Store and is planned by Love's to be used as for expanded parking. The real property was within the certified territory of the retail electric supplier, specifically Wheatland Electric Cooperative Incorporated. And pursuant to KSA 66-1,176, the city has an obligation to negotiate for the issuance of a franchise agreement pursuant to KSA 12-2001 with WCI, Wheatland Electric, since WCI is the retail electric supplier holding a certificate within the annexed area. And again, then on June 9, 2020, the city provided notice to Wheatland that the annexations, of the annexations, and whether they wish to apply for a franchise. On July 9, 2020, WCI did make a request for consideration of a franchise, not to serve only the property annexed into the city by ordinance 2863-2020, but included in Wheatland's request is the property located at 3285 East Highway 50. This is actually Love's Convenience Store. This was added to the city boundaries in 2015 and has been served by the city electric ever since. With that annexation, when Love's first came in, the city paid WCI the invoiced amount for the annexation as required by KSA 66-1-176. We paid that in January of 2016. Just to remind the commission, the only issue for consideration by the governing body is the service, is who's going to service the newly annexed property and not the existing Love's Convenience Store. Also, the governing body had its regularly scheduled meeting on April 7, approved ordinance 2862-2020, annexing the property located at 1601 West Mary Street into the boundaries of the city. Again, on June 9, 2020, the city provided notice to Wheatland of the annexations and whether it wished to apply for a franchise. Wheatland included in their franchise request for a franchise to serve the property located at 1601 West Mary Street. They included both requests in the same form that you guys have in your packet. Again, this real property was within the service territory of the retail electric supplier, specifically Wheatland Electric. And pursuant to KSA 66-1,176, the city has an obligation to negotiate for the issuance of a franchise agreement pursuant to KSA 12-2001 with Wheatland Electric, since Wheatland was the retail electric supplier holding the certificate within that annexed area. So we, the city, city staff, we went through both pieces of property and went through the eleven factors for each. I will go through those, and then we'll go from there. I apologize, sorry about that. The first one is the public convenience and necessity. The city has provided reliable, adequate, and efficient service to its residents for over 100 years. Within the city limits, the city is publicly accountable to its citizens and is in the best position to gauge what is appropriate for the public convenience and necessity of its residents. Rates of various suppliers, there are rates listed right there. The rate currently being charged for the existing Love's Convenience Store, currently within the city boundaries and served by the city since 2015, is in the large general service rate. The four parking lot lights located in the newly annexed area, for example, uses four 511-watt parking lot lights, LED lights. They are estimated to consume 24 kilowatt-hours of energy per month. This is based upon the lights being turned on for an average of 12 hours a day. The monthly increase to their existing utility bill would be $52. These additional lights will not increase the monthly demand, as the convenience store currently sets its highest consumption or demand during the daylight hours. And it should also be noted that there is no differential in summer or winter rates with the city, nor is there any energy cost adjustment or power cost adjustment added to the city's bills. As directed by KSA 66-1,176, there will be an eight-and-a-half percent of the gross revenues of the total retail sales attributed to new customers in this area to be paid to Wheatland Electric. This eight-and-a-half percent of gross revenues will be paid to the Wheatland Electric Cooperative Incorporated for bare ground compensation, as stated in KSA 66-1,176. How this fee will be collected and from whom it is collected and the amount has not been determined by the city commission. However, eight-and-a-half percent of the $52 per month increase would be $4.42. And the city will not incur any costs associated with the development of this property. Next one is C, the desires of the customer and customers to be served. The owners of the property expect all services to be provided by the city. In fact, the owners of the annexed property consented to the annexations with the understanding that they would receive all city services, including electric service to the four parking lot lights. And there's a, there's a map back in there. You can look at that here in a little bit. The item D, economic impact of the suppliers. There is no economic impact expected to be placed on the power supplier for the city. The increase of the number of customers being served by the city will eventually lower its cost per customer, creating greater efficiencies. Letter E, economic impact on the customers of the supplier. There will be no economic impact expected to be placed on existing customers in the city. F, suppliers' operational ability to serve the annexed area. As stated earlier, the city already serves the Love's Convenience Store and has since 2015. The four parking lot lights that are planned to be installed on the newly annexed area will be a very small increase in load to the facility that's already serving with the transfer that serves their convenience store. Avoiding, letter G, avoiding the wasteful duplication of facilities. There will be no duplication of facilities, as there will be no existing electrical facilities on the property after the developer requests that Wheatland's facilities be removed. The city already has all the underground facilities in place that's currently serving the existing Love's Convenience Store. The existing Wheatland Electric Cooperative facilities that exist on this newly annexed property will be requested by the developer to be removed to allow for the demolition of an existing building currently in place. Letter H, avoiding unnecessary encumbrances on the landscape. All existing city facilities on the property are already underground, thus preventing any unnecessary encumbrances on the property. Preventing the waste of materials and natural resources. There will be no waste of materials or natural resources in providing electric services to property. Letter J, proposals from any retail electric supplier holding a certificate in an annexed area. Wheatland has made the request for a franchise to serve not only the newly annexed area, but the existing Love's property that includes a convenience store already inside the city boundaries and being served by the city since 2015. Plus, Wheatland's request includes a franchise request for the property annexed in ordinance number 2862-2020, which is the 1601 West Mary Street. Letter K, whether the selection is in the public interest as it relates to these factors considered by the city. The city can consider other factors and consider granting a franchise to another retail electric supplier or the city. The fact that the property is being annexed into the city and that the city provides its own electric service within its city limits can allow for that consistent policy. A continuation of service by the city in the city limits can create a safer environment in the event of storm damage, storm damage, or physical damage to facilities. Police and fire officials would know that all facilities within the city limits are served by only the city's utility and avoid confusion or unnecessary delays in interrupting or restoring power. With that, that's the, I'll just call it the Love's Annexation. And in Wheatland's request for franchise, he did refer to the rate schedule of, he made a comparison in Exhibit A from Wheatland of what he felt was the rate comparison between Garden City and Wheatland Electric. And I have a, you guys get one? Okay. I put together a actual convenience, the actual comparison. This is Love's Convenience Store, their June billing of 2020. And I used the same information that Wheatland provided under their general service, small general service urban rate. We use the actual kilowatt-hours and the actual demand, and I won't go through all of the numbers. I did apply their cost of service adjustment, which is a reduction at the present time. But the bottom line is, is Garden City's bill for that month was $3,309.94, and Wheatland Electric's bill would be $3,801.04. be three thousand, eight hundred and one dollars and four cents. This is almost fifty-eight hundred, almost six thousand dollars per year difference. So I just wanted to point that out. And when you consider this at another meeting, Wheaton Electric certainly would have an opportunity to contest that number, but I wanted to make that point. And then, if it's all right, we'll move on to this one, at sixteen oh one West Mary Street. I'm not going to go, I'm not going to read every one of these. The biggest difference between this property and the previous one is there are no electric services whatsoever on this small piece of property, no Wheaton facilities and no city facilities. The city does serve the property adjacent to it, who's the current owners of the property that was annexed. And I would certainly answer any questions on either one of those.
Mike, are there any other deviations from what you presented through the Love's Annexation? Also considering the West Mary Annexation, are any changes at all in your discussion of the factors?
No, there's not, not Randy. Everything would be the same, the eight and a half percent still applies, should something be built there, and if you chose, the city would serve it. It's a very small piece of property, it's highly unlikely that much of anything can actually be constructed on that piece of property, other than perhaps a parking lot. When the property was annexed, they didn't indicate that they were, they just wanted to grade it and make some more additional parking for their, their part, their property there.
So, Mike, I have a question. With, so with what you presented here, is it, what Wheaton Electric submitted was for, is it just the lights on that annexed property, or is it for the lights and the building?
In Wheaton's proposal, they proposed serving the lights and the building.
Okay.
All of it.
Okay.
The only thing that, Commissioner, that is really up for consideration is the small piece that was annexed.
Yeah.
And I think if, if we could, I could point that out on that, one of them drawings, if Matt can pull it up, maybe that's.
That's kind of where I was getting confused, because then, and then they threw the, the West Mary property, and I thought, well, there's no building over there yet.
Yeah, that one right there, the.
Yeah.
This is the property that was recently annexed, this yellow part. The purple was already annexed into the city, and that's Love's property. This piece of property is not even in the city limits at the present time. These are the four lights that will be installed. That will serve the rest of this property, oh, I'm sorry. This is the property that was annexed, this is the property that's in the city limits. These are the four lighting standards that will be put in the parking lot to serve the additional parking for Love's. And then the next, there's another drawing, Matt, I think, that shows how Love's plans to serve this. This one won't work. These, this is the four lights, that were in question. You can see they, they're engineers and architects that plan to hook that together, and it comes clear back over here and is served from the existing store and the existing electrical system. By adding that, it's not going to have any impact to the city of Garden City. So should you grant a franchise to Wheaton to serve that, it will be for, there, those four lights. Did that help?
Yeah, thank you.
Mike, did Wheaton request a franchise for the convenience store back in two thousand and fifteen?
I'm sorry?
Has, did Wheaton ever request a franchise be granted to it to serve the convenience store?
No, they did not. When that property was annexed into the city, we notified Wheaton. They just immediately turned around, let us know, this is the fees that you'll have to pay to, which we did, every time we annexed any piece of property, we pay that, according to state statute, those fees were paid, and that was the end of that.
So, so I just want to make sure I'm clear. So Exhibit A is the electric cost from, that Wheaton's provided, and then this is what, did you provide these numbers, Mike, on the, on the Exhibit A, or?
Exhibit A is from Wheaton Electric, and then the handout that you just received today is from me, the colored one that has the yellow and the bronze color, that's from, I put that one together.
The other question I have is, and so, in, generally, we took these annexations one by one, is there a reason why we're taking them more, is, I mean, it could be efficiency, or is, is that their reason why we're doing both of these, or, it's just because it was in their request, or?
They requested it all in one, so I just followed their request. You can see I laid out the eleven factors for both separate pieces of property, because they are distinctively different pieces of property, but that's why that's all together, Mayor.
And I would, I would imagine that what staff presents to you, as far as proposed findings and conclusions that you'll base your decision on, there'll be two of those, so that you make a decision for each one of these annexed properties.
Okay, that's.
Even though they have their request all in one, I, I think that we should make it more efficient, and you would make a decision on each one of the properties. And you won't do that today, you'll do it at a future meeting.
Okay, any other questions? The, if the governing body does have any additional request, any additional information regarding the eleven factors, or any additional factors to be used in your deliberations, you can certainly ask us, ask Randy, and we'll get that to Wheaton and, and the city, and we'll answer those questions, but that decision doesn't need to be, doesn't need to be made today on what's, what's your final decision.
Any other questions at this time? If not, we can always submit both to Mr. Mierhiter or Randy, and so if there's any other questions, okay?
Okay.
Thank you, Mike, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I think with that, we're ready for the consent agenda. There's two items, so if you don't want to remove anything for discussion, it would be Items C one and C two.
I'd like to remove the item number two, or, I'm sorry, item number one, to go over and discuss.
Okay, so the consent agenda item would be Item C two.
I move to approve the consent agenda, Item C two.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries five to zero. Okay, so we'll pull off Item C one.
Item C one, the governing body has asked to consider and approve an agreement with Gibson, Mancini, Carmichael, and Nelson for architectural services on the new GCPD evidence and municipal court facilities located at three ten North Seventh. Jennifer?
Mayor, governing body, good afternoon. This item before you is a follow-up from what we approved at the previous commission meeting, which were the architectural services with Gibson, Mancini. If you recall, at the last meeting, we had an item that had three proposals from an RFP process that we had gone through, and the governing body selected Gibson, Mancini, and Carmichael, and Nelson to perform those architectural services. We have started the general discussions with them about the commission awarding them this project, and this is their AIA agreement that I did share with Mr. Griselle, and he did review it, he did make some changes. Those changes went back to Mr. Nelson, and Mr. Nelson provided the document that you'll find attached here. I'm happy to answer any questions that, that I'm able to answer in regards to this document, this project, or your approval of this particular agreement with this architectural firm.
I just had one thing, Jennifer, on the reimbursable expenses of ten percent. I know the architect had submitted for a seven percent project price, and normally it's consistent with what that is on, on the reimbursable expenses. So I'd like for them to maybe, if we could ask for them to adjust that, as far as just going with the seven percent all the way around, and not doing the ten percent on that reimbursable expenses.
Sure, and I, I noticed that the reimbursable, reimbursable expenses were at ten percent, and the, if, in their particular proposal that they gave to us, previously, they did say a six percent, it wa, it was a six percent fee on the project, which was slated at eight hundred thousand dollars, if you recall that. But in regards to this particular project on both sides, reimbursable expenses were separate, it was like printing and that kind of stuff, and so I'm happy to go back and have that, if that's something that the commission is interested in doing, I'm happy to go back and have additional discussions with the architect firm about that particular line. If there's any other changes or adjustments, I would also like to hear those, just so that I can do it all together at once, and then only have to bring it back to you one more time.
Yeah, I just wanted to just kind of point out, as far as the consistency of, of the RFP and then the actual AIA contract, was that it stated in the proposal for it to be a, a, not to exceed forty-four eight hundred, but it doesn't state that in the AIA document itself. So just a little bit of open-ended contract here, in my standpoint, my view, so I want everybody to understand that we really need to look at this as far as it being an apples, apples contract, so. But that would be, well, the other suggestion would be to reflect what was in the proposal onto the AIA contract.
So, Mayor, what, what is it you want us to do with this particular?
Yeah, so.
Before you at this time?
Yep.
Because we've heard from one commissioner.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm curious about, so the, in the proposal, there was six percent, is that?
It's actually seven percent, is what it said in the proposal. Is that?
That's actually not correct, no.
Okay.
Their proposal is six percent, it, which, they, they said what they normally charge is seven percent, and in our particular case, we were given six percent, because they already had the drawings for this particular, and they said that they felt like that was equal to one percent, and so their, their calculation of that was six percent off of the project cost that I gave them, which was eight hundred thousand dollars, and I think what they did state, maybe in the letter that they sent, was that if it was, if the project went over that eight hundred thousand dollars, that they would expect that we would negotiate a price beyond that, which I think is maybe similar to the wording that they used in the agreement. As you all and I have had discussions previously, we've talked about how important it is that we stay on that budget, whether anyone else agrees with that budget or not, architect or contractor or anyone else, it is really important that we stick, stick to a budget that we set.
So I'm curious, other comments from commissioners? I'm trying to, to determine what would be really the reimbursable, I mean, the ten percent, I'm trying to figure out what would be, because there's a lot of this that's marked out that they don't need, so.
So, for instance, a reimbursable expense might be if they had to do printing for us, if there was something that they printed, they could potentially, that could, that could be seen as a reimbursable expense. There, I could probably get a list of all of the potential reimbursable expenses that are out there, but I know that in the RFP process, they, there were some of those that were listed out for all of the architects.
Any other questions or further discussions on this one that you want to?
And can, can we call up that point where it references the seven percent?
I guess it would be in their proposal from the last time.
Yeah.
It, it did say that these fees are based on a seven percent average cost of, of reconstruction. Normally, our fee for this type of project would be eight.
Okay, sorry.
And so, is there a lack of confidence by one or more, that the commissioners, that this contract reflects the proposal? Because I think we have an obligation to present to you, which is why we put it on the consent agenda, an agreement, a negotiated agreement, which is, you know, obviously it's got tons more words than a proposal, but that the, the main bones of that agreement reflect what you based your decision on, and so.
I'll make a motion. Go ahead. Go ahead.
I was going to say, if there's a difference in what was in the proposal, or there's a lack of confidence in what was in the proposal is actually in the agreement, then I think we have an obligation to prove that otherwise, or say, you know, it's different, let's go back and see if that's.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm wondering if that really changes the intent, it doesn't change the price that we're, I don't see that this is a, a, a change in the price of what we've already agreed on, the cost to be, I mean, I'm asking, I mean, the cost and everything is the same, and our budget's the same, and that's really.
The staff has not changed their budget, or what they intend to spend on this project, if that's what you're asking?
Right, that's exactly.
I'll make a motion, we approve the agreement as presented.
I'm the second. So it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Okay, so we have four, and then one nay.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we're done with business, so Commissioner reports.
Commissioner Orler.
All right, well, we helped stuff the bus this past week. I'm still trying to wake up from this.
Wasn't my bad.
We, we stuffed over two thousand backpacks and an additional, I don't know, a hundred and fifty bags, and we ran out by one thirty. And so it was crazy. In a normal year, we do, I want to say around thirteen or fourteen hundred, so this is a significant increase. We do have some money in our budget, this thing's too big for me. We do have some money in our budget to be able to provide additional backpacks to children who need them, and they can always just call United Way if they need a backpack, but I suggest that they do it quickly, because it's kind of a first come, first served. Well, it, next is, congratulations to Chief on his retirement, and then also, Andy, I wish you good luck in, in what you do moving forward. You've been a great asset, both of you have been great assets to the city, and you're going to both be missed tremendously, so. And then get out and vote, so thank you to you ladies for doing that today. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Dick.
Thought we had a really good pre-meeting, especially a discussion about home rule and, and what that means and why that's important to, to have as a goal for our commission to defend, so a great pre-meeting. Commissioner Orler covered pretty much everything else that I was going to say. Again, it's, it's hard to believe that it's been a hundred years that we've had a women's vote. It seems like it should have been a lot more than that, and just thinking it's a hundred years is, is kind of surprising, it's only been a hundred years. Again, congratulations to Chief on, on his retirement and Andy moving on, and then finally just remember, school is coming back in the session, both the community college and our school district. Just keep everybody in mind as they are navigating the crazy, crazy school year that we're about to take on. That's all I got.
Thank you. Commissioner Suss.
Like the update on the progress at the Big Pool. I really like the, the link that he mentioned, you know, you can kind of, can't kind of, you just click on it and you see how, how it's progressing, and that's a, that's a nice feature for the community to watch how the, the progression of construction, right now deconstruction of the Big Pool, but as we get further along the construction of the Big Pool. Congratulations to the zoo on the new baby giraffe, and the name, I'm not even going to try to pronounce it. The new smart, talking about the zoo, the new smart flower solar system that's going in, great to see this piece of art, quote unquote, actually is, will be producing electricity and something that is unique to our zoo and beneficial, because it will be producing electricity, so great to see that, and it'll interest visitors and hopefully sparking their interest in renewable energy at, in our community, as well as other communities as people visit our zoo. As mentioned, I see, as I was navigating my way to the commission meeting, that they are out painting the school zone walkways and are continuing that. The school zones will be active on Monday, August thirty-first, for the first day of school for Garden City Public Schools. That is a half-day orientation for elementary, fifth grade, seventh grade, ninth and tenth grade students, as well as students that are new to the district. Our first full day of school will be September first. I just want to echo what Commissioner, the commissioners have noted, is that be mindful, it's been almost six months that we have not delivered or have had students go to school, so just be mindful of the school zones and be mindful of those students, as well as school buses that are picking up, dropping off students, and students that are walking to school. I know we get into a routine, and it gets hard to get out of that routine, but just please be mindful of that as we start. I know we get into a routine and it gets hard to get out of that routine, but just please be mindful of that as we start school back up. It's like it was mentioned, it's going to be an unusual year. It's been an unusual year so far, but, um, let's try to make it as normal as possible. And that's what we're doing at the school district. Also wanted to congratulate, uh, Chief on his retirement, especially the big award that he, that he received. It's great to have representation, uh, from our community in, in those, uh, national type of, uh, gatherings. It gives good input. And then Andy, you will be missed. Other than that, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ortiz.
Yeah, I'd echo everything you guys said and congratulations. It's a bittersweet day, bitter, sweet, you know, thanks for. You know, there's, there's just a lot to say about how individuals, uh, do impact, uh, communities. So you guys have tremendously impacted our community with everything that you guys done. You ladies, uh, impacting all the women out here who, who have this opportunity. And we just, we're thankful that you guys are, are in our lives. And Andy, it's been a pleasure, you know, bumping into you in high school, playing ball together, uh, and then seeing you here at the city. Maybe, you know, along the road in the future, we, we might bump into each other again. So good luck on your journey, Chief, good luck on yours. Um, yeah, we, we'll miss you guys and, and for everybody up here, we, I think we're just glad that you guys had put a footprint here in Garden City. So thanks again.
Thank you. So, um, I, I wanna echo the same thing that Commissioner Sessa talked about, school, uh, school zones. Uh, you know, in the morning, a lot of students still walk, so please be mindful of them. And this, you know, really this, make sure you start out a little bit earlier so you have some time. Especially, um, on the first several weeks as we, as we develop a new routine. I'm just excited to see kids having the option to be able to go back to school. Um, I participated in the siege event while I was there in the siege and got really muddy. I don't know participation is what you would call it. This, I just wanted to say thank you to the Garden City Recreation Commission on another great event. It was so fun being around other people, um, in a big outdoor event. And I think they did a really great job and really focused on safety. And so it was a lot of fun. I'm so cleaning mud out of places, so. Um, I also wanna make sure the downtown, the banners are downtown and they're up. Um, during the day when we walked on the banner art, the banner wa, it was so hot. Um, so mornings and evenings, I, if you wanna knit a nice stroll and see some incredible artwork by people, some really, I'm just, every year I think it can't get any better and, and so really great, all the way downtown. So I encourage you to do that. Also wanna let you know that the census workers are out and so they are asking, and so be kind to census workers. For those who are, if they're coming to your house, um, my wife is doing the census working this year and, um, is really enjoying getting to know people. And also, um, it's, it's a really neat opportunity to say, you know, our town matters, our community matters. A hundred years, I have, uh, daughters who are, uh, we are a voting family, all of us can vote now. Um, my youngest turned eighteen and voted in his first primary. He thought it was a regular election, so. Anyway, we're still, there's still education for all of us to do, so, um, I was excited by that. Um, so again, being able to vote is, it's, it's such a huge privilege here in America. Andy, I first met you, um, when I was, um, trying to get to do yoga at the park and kind and helpful. I was like, I was like, are you sure you are, I, he was, he was for real. Um, I've enjoyed being, um, Andy's my neighbor too, so, um, I'm gonna miss you in the neighborhood. And, you know, I know that Wichita is gaining an incredible asset. Um, so hopefully, uh, when you're kinda tired of the big city life, you can come back home. Chief, it's, I don't really know. I, um, I'll tell you, you've done so much incredible work. And I, I think one of the work, and I know there'll be opportunity to talk to you lots of times, but, um, you know, the work with the refugees, refugee community and just the way that you welcome people to our community, um, making sure that the police are out and about and being involved in things. I know it's a big drain on, on the police force, but I love your outlook for community. And so, um, well, we're sure gonna miss you and I, it's a promotion and I, you know, I know that you've spent some time here, that this is part of that journey, a long journey, but, um, I'm excited to see what happens next for you. But I just wanted to say thank you just publicly and thank you for all of the, that your, um, heart for our community. And so it's been, it's been tremendous. Hopefully you're gonna stay in our community until someone snatches you away, but, um, I just wanted to say thank you. And with that, uh, I think that's all that we need to talk about, so with that, we will be adjourned.